Yes, on there.
Yes.
Alright.
And that was a yes for me.
Yes, I see two yeses. Alright, so we got seven zero. Wanted to make sure. Alright, next on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing I O D E Epsilon Sigma chapter of Sigma Gamma Rosas Sorority Incorporated for Day of Service. Let me read that. Says, whereas the town of Dumfries traditionally recognized organizations who have made significant contributions to our community, and the Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated has done so and celebrated its founders day, or will celebrate it on November twelfth, twenty 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 one. And whereas Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated is an international community service driven organization that was organized on November twelfth nineteen twenty-two in Indianapolis, Indiana, for the intent and continued goal for proactive community outreach and greater service, greater progress. Its founders are Mary Lou Allison Gardner Little, Dorfley Hanley Whiteside, Vivian Irene White Marlberry, Nanny Mae Gong Johnson, Hattie Mae Annette Doolin Redford, Betsy Mae Downey Rhodes Martin and Kubina McClair. And whereas the illustrious organization is the only sorority in the National Panhellenic Council that began as a professional sorority, to this day, the mission to enhance the quality of life for women and their families in the United States and globally through community service, civic and social action continues. Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated has over a hundred thousand members and has chartered chapters worldwide. And whereas on March thirty first, two thousand and one, the Northern Virginia Alumni I O D E Epsilon Sigma Chapter was chartered locally, the I O D E Epsilon Sigma Chapter has contributed over six thousand hours of community service, has had annual staple events, including Women's Development and Empowerment Day, a youth symposium, and the Hattie McDaniel Breast Cancer Awareness. These events focus on women, children, and the overall health and development of our community members. And whereas even during the pandemic, the I O D E Epsilon Sigma Chapter was able to raise over three thousand dollars for the March of Don's charity. They hosted a virtual human traffic awareness forum with over six hundred attendees, hosted a virtual Virginia met meet the candidates forum for Congressional District One. They donated to essential workers at local nursing facilities, donated two thousand five hundred dollars to Toys for Tots and a local shelter. I O D E Epsilon Sigma Chapter donated sixteen pairs of shoes and five hundred dollars to Dumfries Elementary School. They donated two hundred dollars to three school teachers and one school, including Dumfries Elementary, Lake Ridge Elementary, Unity Braxton Middle Schools, and the Charles Cogan High School. They also donated enough school supplies for four hundred and twenty-five students at Dumfries Elementary School and donated seven thousand six hundred dollars in award book scholarships to twelve young women who attend high schools in Northern Virginia area during the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one sorority year who transitioned to college. The previous year, I would Epsilon Sigma Chapter donated three thousand five hundred dollars in book scholarships to ten young women. And whereas the current chapter has over ninety members to commemorate their service provided to Dumfries and Prince William County citizens, we would like to proclaim and observe November twelfth as the Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated founders day in Woodbridge and Dumfries, Virginia. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Dumfries recognizes November twelfth, twenty twenty twelve as Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated founders day here in the town of Dumfries. Alright, next on our agenda is the approval of the Dumfries Town Council minute meetings for October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm only approve the minute.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Miles, second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the question. Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Aye.
Councilman Brown? I got you already, Councilman Fields? Councilman Pete?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Alright, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. That motion carries seven zero. Alright, next on our agenda is the citizen comment period for anything that's not on the current agenda. Councilwoman signed up?
Mayor, we have one person that signed up, Toni Thornton. She does not reside in the town of Dumfries, but she would like to speak on civic scholarship.
Hello, good evening. My name is Toni Thornton. I am a Community Engagement Manager for Strayer University. Prior to the pandemic, I was the campus director at the Woodbridge Campus. Our campuses have pretty much been closed since then and we're slowly reopening. However, I wanted to let all employees of the town of Dumfries know that we are offering a fifty percent off scholarship for all bachelor's and master's degree programs for employees of the town of Dumfries. And please excuse me, I was rushing, so I neglected to bring my flyers. However, I will make sure that Mr. Rogers gets them tomorrow to disseminate amongst the town of Dumfries. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me directly.
Want to ask a question? Do you want to say this in common? Okay, go ahead. I'll I'll give you a point of personal privilege.
Thank you. Does that does that apply to council members as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you. Okay, alright, next is how mayor and council comments. Alright, do we have sound over there? I just want to make sure, Mr. Rogers? Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Neville, you have any comments tonight?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who voted. Thank you for coming out and exercising your civic duty. I'd like to thank everyone who ran. Can you hear me? Okay, everyone who ran, and I'd like to congratulate everyone who won. And now we move forward to work together to make our communities bigger and stronger, and I'd also like to draw attention to acts they have a drive going on now as we approach the winter holiday season. So support acts, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pete?
Oh, no comments, the nightmare.
Alright, thank you, sir. Councilman Fields? Okay, Councilman Brown?
No comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Miles?
No comments tonight.
Vice Mayor?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Alright. My remarks should be pretty brief. First, I want to say congratulations to all who ran for office last night. Running for office is a sacrifice of time, talent, and resources. Congratulations to the new administration elect. Want to send a special shout out to the U.S. Marine veteran, as I am a Marine, Winsome Sears, becoming the first woman, Black woman, and first woman of Jamaican origin to be elected to a statewide office in Virginia. November also want to highlight Military Family Appreciation Month. Military Family Appreciation Month is set aside to recognize the military family. Military families know what it means to serve. Every day they get up, they support their service member, standing by during long training and deployments. They know the risks, but they accept the life of service anyway. They know service is an honor. They're the backbone of our military. They're the quiet but steady fuel at home that keeps the fire burning. They keep track of the military pay benefits, the different news, because that they know that that make a daily difference. And when the time as an actively serving family comes to an end, they support the veteran. Serving is just what military families do. Also, please don't forget to celebrate veteran owned businesses across the country. From November first through the fifth in twenty twenty-one, the U.S. Small Business Administration celebrates, connects, and empowers service members during National Veterans Small Business Week. If you want more information, see the Small Business Administration website. Want to give a happy birthday to all the Marines. November tenth, they will be two hundred and forty-six years young. Born in a bar, Tun Tavern, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Bruh. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody in advance and happy National Gratitude Month. I like National Gratitude Month because it's a zerp every November, and it's nothing more than simply saying thank you. Gratitude's amazing powers have the ability to shift us from focusing on the negative to appreciating what is positive in our lives. Practicing daily gratitude gives us a deeper connection to ourselves, the world around us, and to our Creator. Everything in our lives has the ability to improve when we're grateful. Researchers shown that gratitude can enhance our moods, decrease stress, and drastically improve our overall level of health and well-being. On average, grateful people tend to have fewer stress-related illnesses and experience less depression and even lower blood pressure. They're more physically fit and they're happier. Sometimes they even have a higher income, more satisfying personal and professional relationships, and will be better liked. Grateful kids are even more likely to get those A's in school. If everyone practiced daily gratitude, we could change ourselves and possibly even the planet for better. Everyone would be more happier. Love would grow and hate would decrease, and the world would actually know some true peace. And so my monthly food for thought would be gratitude turns what we have into enough. So what are you waiting for? Give gratitude a try. You'll be happier if you did. And those are my remarks for today. Alright, now our action items. So public hearing for ordinance concerning firearms in the town buildings within the town of Dumfries. Right, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I would like to get the council's support for an ordinance concerning firearms in town building within the town of Dumfries. The ordinance prohibiting firearms in the town building.
Any discussion? Councilman Fields?
Yes, specifically for this space. And just to put it out there, I actually hold a concealed carry permit and will base my vote on the safety of my constituents and my colleagues while in this space, and that's what this ordinance is for.
Say answer your question. Okay.
Just for clarification, we have an email concerning the civic center across the street. If you could rent that out. So it's not a community that, it's just basically.
Alright. Councilman Brown?
So just had a couple of questions about the parks. Enforcement of that. I I support, let me say this, I support the the ordinance. But I had questions about how are we going to maintain the parks when we say that's going to be prohibited for people who have concealed carry permits?
Town manager or town attorney, how would how would that go about? Do we have an enforcement regulation in there? Let's see. Open your mic so they can hear you too. Oh, okay. Alright, so the enforcement would be ones like metal detectors, deterrents when they come in, to be checked when they come in.
At at the parks.
Say again?
At the parks.
No, not the parks. It's just in this it's just in this town space, in the in the town hall space here. So just this particular building, in this in the town hall building, in the suite, in the suite, and I'll and I'll I'll read this for clarity, so that way, before we get into the thing. So the ordinance, huh? Yeah, please.
It's also on the town website, if you want to go and read it yourself.
Excuse me, sir, order?
Ordinance prohibiting firearms in town buildings, whereas Virginia General Council Assembly amended VA Code fifteen dot two dash nine one five to allow localities to prohibit the possession, the possession, carrying, and transporting the firearms on locality-controlled premises. And whereas the Code of Ordinance of the Town of Dumfries, Chapter thirty-eight, Article Two, Section thirty-eight through forty-six prohibits the discharge, but not the carrying of firearms in Section thirty-eight dash forty-seven, prohibits only the carrying of concealed un- unpermitted firearms in a non-exhaustive list of space. And whereas the town council desires to amend Chapter thirty-eight, Article Two, to prohibit the carrying of firearms in certain areas controlled by the town of Dumfries, and whereas pursuant to the requirements in the town code and all other applicable laws, the town council desires to deliberate deliberate upon the review and proposed ordinance thirty-eight dash forty-eight and provide the public the opportunity to be heard on the matter. Now therefore be it resolved by town council that the town manager is authorized to advertise for a public hearing on proposed Section thirty-eight dash forty-eight before the town council as follows. And then the chapter article is there, which I will not be reading.
So Mayor, I was not finished.
Councilman Brown?
So this is for the town attorney, based upon the second amendment and and supporting this particular ordinance. Are we violating any rights legally? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, can you repeat your answer, just so, because we got people watching as well?
The ordinance is directly authorized. That expressly allows localities to prohibit firearms on and in the property. And it's the purview of the town to do that or to not to do that, but it's authorized by the state statute.
Let's answer your question, Mr. Brown. Okay. Alright, Mr. Pete, did you have any questions? Because I just want to make sure I didn't.
Okay, so when we're when we're saying specific in towns buildings, and I heard, I just heard we're specifically talking about the town itself? Are we not? I think we need a little bit more clarity on what buildings are we talking about. I understand we're specifically talking about the town building, but what about our other buildings and all of our parks that we are in control of?
Alright, so as far as prohibition, Section B says the possession, carrying, or transportation of any firearms or ammunition is prohibited in any building in which the town regularly conducts legislative action. This section shall apply expressly, but not only to the following address, one seven seven three nine Main Street. For the building used by the town and private entities, this section shall apply only to the part of the building being used for governmental purpose. Does that answer your question, Mr. Pete?
That's correct. That's clarity. Thank you.
Okay, I know, but he asked the question. Councilwoman Neville?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I could not hear the attorney and some of the dialogue that took place prior to him speaking, but if he could repeat what he said with the microphone, so I can hear.
Standing at the podium.
Sorry about that. My microphone over there, I think it needs a new battery. What I was telling the councilman was that this ordinance is actually explicitly authorized by the Virginia Code. There's a new section put in by the legislature that allows for localities and to prohibit firearms in town buildings, and it's kind of up to their purview as to how far they want to take that, but right now it seems or in Section B, it tells all of the places where where this will apply to, but as far as any sort of authorization question, this is all taken care of. The legislature made sure that the towns can just if they choose to do this, they absolutely have the authorization to by the state. And does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I can hear you clearly now. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
So that's all I had.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Fields? So you got to turn your mic on to speak into it, please?
Yeah. I know it says the address. I get I think, you know, if if we go forward with this after comments and everything, we just need to add Suite two hundred. So that won't be confused as the whole building.
Well, Section two says, for a building used by both town and private entities, this section shall apply only to the part of the building being used for governmental. Okay.
Clear enough.
Alright. Y'all want me to read it again? That's why I just like to read it. Alright, you good? Alright, that's why I do that. Alright. Councilwoman Miles, did you have anything before I open up the public here? Okay. Alright, at this time, open up the public comment. Are there any citizens in town here that signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. I will call first those that indicate that they reside within the town of Dumfries, and if the mayor desires to hear the others, I will then call them. The first is Mr. Jay Hart, seventeen six zero one Chisholm Lane, Dumfries.
Okay. I would just ask if you please state, well, you already have the name and address is written. Okay, so you have two minutes?
Two minutes, sir. Thank you. Hi, my name is Jay. I live in Southbridge, which is just a stone's throw down the road. Pretty much if I want to go anywhere, I'm coming through the great city of Dumfries, wouldn't you agree, pretty much? So I'm trying to figure out what the problem is exactly that you're trying to solve here, because I've lived in this area for eleven years. I think I remember two people being killed in the area in the whole time. But so homicides, murders are not common around here, so unless I've missed the news, I'm just trying to figure out. If I understand what vice, what the Vice Mayor stated earlier is, this ordinance would only apply to this building. And if that is true, then Section D is not needed. Section D basically says you're going to post at the entrance of any building or part they're owned. Let me make sure I got the right, right section. Section D, it's going to be, notice is going to be posted at all entrances of any building or part they're owned owned by the by the town. Delta two says, at all entrances of any public park owned or operated by the locality. What? Are you expanding this further than this building? Is it going to be citywide? Is that what you're doing? Are you trying to disarm people? I'm a concealed carry holder. I'm sure there are others in this room. I fail to understand why you want to limit what I'm doing. Just one, one second. If you do pass this as a resident in your immediate area, then you've limited my rights to protect my wife and myself. I'm going to boycott every business in your city for two years that I can, and I visit a lot of businesses in your area. I just want you to be aware of that. It's going to have ramifications for you to do this. I think this is ill-advised. I don't see the problem that you're trying to solve. We don't have a lot of crime in this area.
Who do you have next signed up?
Thank you.
Robert Hand?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Hand. I live in Williamstown. To supplement what Mr. Hart was saying, what is the purpose of this? Have there been any incidents in these chambers that this is necessary? I'll come out and say it. Those of you that support this legislation are dishonest or ignorant. Yes, I said that. You're infringing people's rights to protect themselves. Boy, feel secure now with with all these police officers here? I was sure feeling threatened when you guys surrounded me back in January, because I wouldn't follow your your faulty logic, no mask policy. How about you consult people who are actually knowledgeable on guns and have integrity about it that could tell you the faults? A sign at the door? What criminal follows the the signs on the doors and abides by them? And are you going to be liable if there are casualties for people that violate that? My hundred twenty pound Tibetan mastiff drops bigger loads with integrity than you have.
Anybody else signed up?
And I hope I pronounced the first name correctly. Is it Nevely? Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm here to speak for the ordinance. Now, listening to all of the comments, the ordinance is to limit firearms, weapons in this part of the chamber. Now, I listen to my fellow people speak, and what I'm not understanding from them is we only asking you not to bear your arms in this particular part while they're doing government business. They did not say that they are taking your rights away from your guns or anything like that. They just said in this particular chamber, you're not to bring your firearms. You can leave them outside in your vehicle. Come in here, do your business, go back out, get your firearms. It's nothing wrong with that. I work for federal government. We do it all the time. So it should not be this big deal about protection. Any given moment, someone in here could have a moment if we all had arms, and it could be a catastrophe. Yes, it could. So therefore, this is a good ordinance in this day and time with all that's going on in the world. My name is Nevely Turey, and I endorse this message.
Is there anybody else signed up this week?
Yes, sir. The others have indicated they do not live within the town of Dumfries. Okay. The first is Steven, thank you, Tyndall.
Hello, all. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm new to the area, been here about eight or nine months. I have been a armed security guard in the past. Now, you're worried about what goes on in this chamber for your own safety, for your own protection? own protection? So, you know, despite the fact that you have police officers present, I'm sure you want a little extra protection in your own offices. If you are limiting your own rights to carry your own firearm for your protection, what good are the police going to do in this chamber? You, you're cutting your own throats by denying yourselves the ability to protect yourselves, which is every citizen's fundamental right. Um, you know, I can leave my gun outside, I can do whatever it is you want me to do, be a law-abiding citizen. Someone that's intent on harming any of you isn't going to do that. So wanding them, okay, they shoot that person. Someone that is committed to violence will honor that commitment. All you're doing is disarming yourselves and making your, and making yourselves go from a victim, I'm sorry, from a citizen to a victim. You can look, uh, I'm passionate about this because I listened to the testimony of a woman who left her firearm in the, uh, glove box and witnessed her parents being gunned down while she tried to escape. If she had been allowed to keep her firearm, she may have saved her parents' lives. He was an indiscriminate man, man, he was nuts. But he was armed, and he didn't care who he was killing. Why are you going to deny yourselves your rights as citizens to protect yourselves? Thank you.
Gerald Ryan.
My name's Gerald Ryan, live right over here in Stonewall Manor, been in the area for eleven years. Uh, I'm retired military, my son's a cop in the neighboring county, so I'm very familiar with law enforcement, very familiar with defending that flag for the better part of three decades. Uh, I listen to the conversation here, and here's my issues. I also pay very close attention to what goes on locally. Um, my issue here, it, you read a few paragraphs of the ordinance, but you stopped at the things that I think are the more controversial. Um, I understand Suite two hundred, I understand you wanted to add that. We, I'm not going to say for or against, but what you didn't read is the part of, uh, B, paragraph B three, "If parts of the building being used for governmental and non-governmental purposes must share an emergency exit, or there is no feasible method of barring access, et cetera, et cetera, that's prohibited." First of all, I don't understand what that means, but my understanding is as I walked up here, that would be covered by the way this reads right now. As they skip down further, now you're talking about all entrances of any public park owned or operated by the locality, any entrances at recreation or community centers. So it is not just this building as your ordinance is written right now. I agree with the things, what are the problems? Uh, what a problem are you trying to address? I am a concealed carry holder, I understand the Constitution, I've read the, the history as well, but you've made some very confusing patchwork for normal law-abiding citizens, and you're going to pass a law that's a class one misdemeanor that makes a criminal out of people who are not criminals. And I think that's getting lost in some of the discussion, or not brought up at all by, by the town. My son goes to school in this town, I drive by here every day. I had a shooting next door to my house, uh, a year and five months ago. I had a shooting one door down from there, and I live in Stonewall Manor the year before. So crime is, is an issue. Um, I think is patchwork, you're setting up law-abiding innocent people for a problem-
Thank you, sir.
-as it is in the way this is, and it's infringing on rights. Thank you for your time.
Victor.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. Um, a lot of, uh, a lot of what has been said is that the legislature passed, uh, certain, uh, ordinances that allowed, uh, localities to change their laws to now create a patchwork of infringement or non-infringement of the Second Amendment. Uh, you guys are standing or sitting behind the American flag, which you guys, uh, have upheld that the oath of the Constitution, that you're going to protect the Constitution. The Second Amendment is part of the Constitution. The Virginia Constitution also protects it. And, um, as some have said, what is the problem that you guys are trying to solve? If there is no problem, then what are we, what are creating a solution for? Um, at this point, at this point, many of, many here, uh, said that they're concealed handgun, uh, permit owners. If you continue to infringe on the rights of the people, you're not representing us. That is a problem, a fundamental problem that is happening across the United States where councils, legislatures are not listening to the people that they were sworn to represent. That's all we're asking you to do. Is the ordinance is confusing, the gentleman just expressed why it's confusing. You guys say it's going to be limited to, uh, Suite two hundred, but the ordinance itself says this building not in, and, and to include other buildings. So there's no reason for us to believe that it's only going to be this building. If it's going to be this building, then make it this building in the ordinance. Say this building is prohibited. Fine. Don't add parks, don't add community centers, don't add anything else that you guys feel unsafe on. The people that are unsafe are the people that are out there. There's no police out there in a park necessarily. Those are the people that are going to be, and there is no, there is no provision for concealed handgun permit carriers to be exempt from this particular ordinance. Thank you very much.
Mayor, you don't have anyone else. No one else has signed up.
And it's time we'll close the public hearing up. All right. We'll round the council one more time. Counselman Pete, Debbie.
Oh, yes, I would, um, I would like to see if we can, uh, bring this back and, um, actually put in the specifics of, of what we're, we're, we're talking of, though it's not jumbled all, all over the place. And, uh, at the parks, you know, we may, may want to relook at, I, I understand the council building, yes, yes, I do, but at the parks, we may want to relook into that because, um, some parents may want to feel safe with, um, carrying their concealed at the parks, but definitely, um, uh, prohibiting it from being into the council building in the, um, I mean, into the building itself. That's all I have.
Okay. Counselwoman DeVeau.
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Counselman Fields. Okay. Counselman Brown.
So I have a couple comments. Um, I read over a hundred and forty-five, hundred fifty emails that were submitted to, uh, the town, read each one of them. A hundred of them were pretty much stamped from some organization. Uh, my position, if, if you're serious about your position, please state it clearly. And, and what, what I got was something that was sent over with no doubt, with no thought behind it. Uh, there were other comments that made sense. Uh, the concealed weapon issue, that makes sense. Uh, the, the, the way the ordinance is written, that makes sense. I'm a concealed weapon holder. I carry two weapons on. I have six guns and bought to purchase another, two AR fifteen formats. This is not an issue of gun rights. This right here is not an issue of gun rights. I support guns, okay? And all I'm saying is this council and this office, this building here, when I see people walk into this building with open carry, I get offended. People who are not comfortable around guns, they get offended. We want to make sure that this place that we do business and conduct legislation, that when they come in here, they feel safe. We have cops here. They in here every meeting. I don't need to bring a gun in here. I have cops that go to the range, they're, they're, they're qualified, they know how to handle things in this chamber. So I don't see that this is a gun issue more than is, I don't like what you're doing. So I understand, I read, and, and I agree with some of the pieces here, but this is not about one side against the other side. We have to have some kind of agreement if we're going to move forward. It's not all or none. And if you're a gun advocate and you support guns, the Second Amendment, this piece right here that we're talking about, it's not an issue. The, the hearing is over. The, the hearing is over. The public hearing is over. The public hearing is over. So Mayor, uh, I do support this. I do believe that there is some errors that we need to clean up. Uh, and Town Attorney, if there's some way that we can amend this moving forward, I'm, I'm on board.
Counselwoman Mouse?
I'd like to provide Counselwoman Pete with some, uh, Counselman Pete with some clarification. Um, the reference to the entrances of the buildings, the park, et cetera, fall under Item D, where it says, "Notice of the prohibitions contained in this section shall be posted." That is a list of where the prohibitions could be posted. That is not a restriction of having a gun at a part, at the park and what have you. So I invite, um, Counselman Pete, if you still have additional questions about that that need more clarification, that, um, we can speak offline, or you can speak to the attorney about it. And for others, I advise to take a moment to thoroughly read and to read with understanding so that we are all clear on what's happening here. Again, those items that refer to the park and, um, recreation community center fall under Item D, which said, "Notice of the prohibitions contained in this section shall be posted," and it lists those places where the prohibition shall be posted, not where it is applicable. Thank you.
All right. And so the only part that I think needs a little bit more interpretation for clarification is B three, Bravo three. If the Town Attorney can speak to that a little bit. Um, what does that part mean? Or Keith, do you understand that part? Yeah.
The intent of, of the sections that are not directly related to the prohibition are to give us the opportunity, because this is a shared use facility, and if council decides to have a meeting, for example, in another town-owned building, which would also have a shared use, to allow us to make the necessary security precautions to uphold the prohibition, regardless of the additional uses that a facility might have. That's, that's the intent of that language. That is all it's designed to do. It is not to increase or add additional prohibitions.
All right. Mr. Brown, is that?
Yes. And let me, let me, I apologize to the public. I also defended this flag for twenty years. I've served this, this, this country for more than thirty years in the public space. So I, I kind of get real, kind of teed off when people tell me about how my lawyers to, to this country, to this constitution, because some people never serve. But they feel like they serve, and they can talk to someone that has served, and they don't, they, they haven't been in that position. So I'm sorry if I came off a little, uh, strong, but, uh, I, I have a little passion too here. Um, we see things that's happening in this country, school boards. This is one of the things, like, I, I appreciate this particular ordinance. Law-abiding citizens are law-abiding until they make a criminal act. So if I'm a school, school board member, and I come to do my job, and I have citizens come in and disrupt that particular board meeting because they feel a certain way, that is an issue that we're not expecting them to do that. This is not happening just here, it doesn't happen across the country. So we're not talking about the parents here, we're talking about prevention, and not prevention of crime, prevention of the result of that crime. So in this facility, we have police officers who have weapons that they carry every day. All we're trying to do, if something happens in this particular chamber, no one should have a gun other than the police. We're going to scream them at the door. That makes sense. That is not about taking your right to carry your weapon and protect your family. That's about in this building. That makes sense. Now, if you don't agree with that, just say I don't agree with that, but that has some rationale behind it. Again, I understand about the way this was written, I understand that, but this little piece that we're talking about right now is not a issue. I'm done.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to call for the cap, um, question to move forward with the ordinance as written.
Okay. So motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance prohibiting firearms in town building. And it was seconded by Counselwoman Mouse? Okay. Discussion, Counselman Fields on the, um, question. He had a comment.
The only comment.
You had to push your mic so that-
Ladies and gentlemen, that we have here in uniform, I too have worn a uniform for this town for eight years. I too have served this country for twenty-four years in the Army, Virginia Army National Guard to be specific. But therefore, I've served this flag, I've served this town, I've served that uniform, and now serving up here. So I agree with the, uh, with the ordinance.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I call for the question. Uh, the motion on the floor is to adopt an ordinance prohibiting firearms in the town building. Uh, motion made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselwoman Mouse. All right. Counselman Brown.
Aye.
Counselwoman Mouse.
Aye.
Counselman Brown. I mean, um, Fields.
Aye.
I keep doing it. Counselman Pete.
I just thought, no.
Okay. Counselwoman DeVeau.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. All right. Vice Mayor.
Yes.
All right. And that's a yes. The motion carries six, one. All right. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.